Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to see you all here today. But before we begin, I do want to honor the lives of two construction workers who died while on the job at JFK International Airport earlier this month. Our hearts go out to the families and loved ones, a 41-year-old Francisco Reyes and 28-year-old Fernando Laguna Speria. Our city's construction workers are pivotal to the success and growth of New York City, especially JFK Airport, which serves as our gateway. We must ensure that essential workers who contribute to the building and daily activities of our city are safe. I also want to take a moment to wish a speedy recovery to 22-year-old Officer Brett Baller of the 103rd Precinct in Jamaica, Queens, who was shot in the line of duty last week. We thank him for his public service to the people of our city, and we certainly want to see him get well soon. This past Friday, a federal judge in Texas issued a dangerous and unprecedented ruling to invalidate the FDA's approval of Mifepristone, also known as the abortion pill. This preliminary ruling threatens the health of millions of women and birthing people across the country who rely on this FDA-approved drug. In fact, Mifepristone has provided more than 5 million people with safe and effective access to abortion and miscarriage care for over 20 years without question. We must be clear that taking away this drug will lead to unnecessary harm, and it is an attack on both reproductive health care and the entire practice of medicine. Last year, our Women Majority Council enacted the historic New York City Abortion Rights Act, including legislation by Councilmember Carlina Rivera to require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene Clinics to provide free abortion medication. As a result of our efforts, access to abortion medication is now law. Here in New York City, Mifepristone remains available to anyone who needs it, including at the Marasena Department of Health and Mental Hygiene Clinic in the Bronx, health and hospitals, public hospitals, and private health clinics. Our Women Majority City Council will continue to defend, support, and expand access to abortion and reproductive health care. New York City will remain a beacon for safe and accessible care for all. Last week, the council released its official response to the mayor's fiscal year 2024 preliminary budget. We made clear our vision for the city budget, one that invests in New Yorkers, delivers essential services for New Yorkers, and supports the economic health and stability for our city. The council's preliminary budget response accounts for all of the economic and budgetary challenges that potentially lie ahead, any potential economic downturns or additional costs of basic services for those here in our city seeking asylum in the United States. It is also covered payment of new labor contract settlements for the municipal workforce. Out of $2.7 billion in available funds that our city budget response identified, we proposed setting aside $1.4 billion for reserves to protect our city from these various potential risks. The other $1.3 billion should be invested in essential services such as education, housing, food assistance, libraries, legal services, community safety, and other programs that our New Yorkers need. These are the types of investments that keep our city healthy, safe, and stable to successfully recover and weather any expected challenges. What New Yorkers cannot afford, however, is another round of budget cuts that threaten to undermine our city's neighborhoods and recovery. Taking away libraries, education programs, and other essential services will destabilize communities and result in harm to New Yorkers. We cannot and we will not accept this. This council is fully prepared to fight for our budget vision to meet the needs of New Yorkers. In the coming weeks, our focus will be on supporting communities across the city in their recovery, pushing back against excessive and unnecessary cuts that will hurt the health and stability of our city. I also want to give a plug to the continued efforts by the council in partnership with the administration to recruit New Yorkers to work for our city and fill important vacancies at our various city agencies. We've been holding hiring events across the city that connect people to municipal jobs, and recently, we held events in Manhattan, Queens, and Brooklyn within Councilmembers Botcher, Schulman, and Hudson's districts. There is an upcoming event on Thursday, April 13th, in Manhattan in Councilmember De La Rosa's district. The civil service is a pipeline to economic stability, and our municipal workforce is essential to our city. We urge New Yorkers seeking employment to attend and join the city's workforce. Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we will vote on the following finance items: Resolution 531, sponsored by Councilmembers Justin Brennan and Farrah Lewis, will set the date for a public hearing on legislation authorizing the combination of the Church Avenue Business Improvement District and the Flatbush Avenue Business Improvement District into one combined bid. The hearing will take place on Thursday, April 27th, at 10:00 a.m. in the committee room. A pre-considered resolution, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan, to authorize an Article 11 exemption for five buildings in Crown Heights in Councilmember Mealy's district; and a pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brennan to amend an existing Article 11 exemption for one building in Alphabet City in Councilmember Rivera's district. Next, we will vote on the following appointments to the New York City Board of Health: Dr. Angelo Acosta, Dr. Mayda Galvez, Dr. Michael Lindsay, and Dr. Junis Salerno. Lastly, we will vote on the following pieces of legislation: Resolution 131, sponsored by Civil Service and Labor Committee Chair Carmen De La Rosa, calls on the fast-food company Wendy's to join the Fair Food Program, a partnership among participating retail produce growers and buyers that ensures fair working conditions and wages for farmworkers. Of the five largest fast-food chains in the country, McDonald's, Subway, Burger King, Taco Bell, and Wendy's, only Wendy's has refused to participate in the Fair Food Program. Resolution 153, sponsored by Councilmember Shawna Brayu, calls on New York City Department of Education to designate a Jewish Heritage Day in our city's public schools in celebration of the contributions and achievements of Jewish Americans. Resolution 344A, sponsored by public advocate Jomani Williams, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to establish the Housing Access Voucher Program, a rental assistance program that would provide housing vouchers to New Yorkers who are homeless or face eviction. Next, as we celebrate National Pet Day, hello, little Skylar, we will be voting on Introduction 4A, sponsored by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, to prohibit the sale of guinea pigs and pet shops. The bill would still allow them to be available for adoption in animal shelters. Prohibiting the sale of guinea pigs and pet shops will bring relief to city animal shelters and other rescuers who have experienced a surge in abandoned and surrendered guinea pigs in the past three years, as well as cutting off the pipeline into New York City from inhumane sources. I now invite Deputy Speaker Ayala to come forward and speak about her bill on these little guinea pigs.
Interestingly enough, I think that this is the bill, right? We all have a bill that defines us, and ironically enough, this one, I believe, is going to be mine. So I hope that you pay attention, because I have a lot of really, really, really nice gems in terms of legislation coming up, and I want equal attention to those as well. But I just, you know, I don't have much to add. I think, you know, everybody has heard over and over how overwhelmed our animal care and control sites are as a result of, you know, the surrendering of guinea pigs in the city. Apparently, you know, during the pandemic, a lot of folks decided to adopt guinea pigs as comfort animals. And guinea pigs are very complicated animals, right? They require a lot of attention, and unfortunately, we've seen a lot of individuals not only surrendering them to ACC but also dumping them in our public playgrounds and some of our gardens. I know one of the gardens around the corner from where I live had two or three guinea pigs thrown over the fence last summer, and we saw some at Central Park, we've seen some, you know, in Brooklyn. And so we just, you know, we want to make it easier, we want to help reduce the population at ACC by encouraging all New Yorkers to go out. If you want a guinea pig, you can go and adopt. We're not, you know, eliminating guinea pigs from the face of the earth. You can still get one. We have many of them at the animal care and control. But we're hoping that this bill will help slow down the number of cases of, you know, guinea pigs that are being dumped, you know, in places where they shouldn't be. So thank you all for the support, and I really want to thank the advocates who have been really great about this and pay attention to, you know, to our other constituency, right, of animals. So thank you all. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Speaker, for your legacy.
Justin is so excited. I can't contain it.
Introduction 475A, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would require the creation of a telemedicine accessibility plan. The bill expands telemedicine services to New Yorkers who have difficulty accessing in-person health care services, including older adults, people with disabilities, and New Yorkers currently involved in the justice system. The idea for this legislation was first introduced in my State of the City address last year, and I'm so thankful to Councilmember Hudson for her leadership in advancing it. I now invite Councilmember Hudson to come to the podium and speak about her bill.
Thank you. Oh, thanks, in front of everybody. I could have been a little more discreet about it. But thank you, I do appreciate it. It's the first time you've been able to see me on top of the podium, so. Passing Intro 675 marks another big step in our effort to ensure all New Yorkers have the opportunity to age in place with the dignity and care we all deserve. With this law, the city will be required to create a telemedicine accessibility plan to improve the availability of portable monitoring and telehealth devices for populations that could be better served by telemedicine services. But plainly, once instituted, the telehealth accessibility plan mandated by Intro 675 will remove barriers to health care for many of our most vulnerable neighbors. According to a 2020 study in the Journal of the American Medical Association, nearly half of older adults surveyed for the study reported feeling unsure about video-based medical visits due to physical and technical limitations. On top of that, most folks who say they felt unsure were among those who self-reported poor health and who were among the study's lowest-income earners. Intro 675 will directly address this divide and offer greater accessibility to telemedicine services for older New Yorkers citywide. This bill goes further than expanding medical visit options. It requires the city to create a plan for the provision of portable monitoring devices like blood pressure monitors and glucometers, as well as tablets and laptops that can provide communication with health care professionals and bridge the digital divide. As this council continues to work tirelessly in service of all New Yorkers, expanding and bolstering the services and resources that keep our communities whole, I look forward to continuing our push to create an inclusive, just, and age-friendly New York alongside Speaker Adams and the rest of my colleagues. And I just want to thank the speaker and just, I guess, point out the fact that when we actually create legislation that's designed for those of us who are most vulnerable and everybody benefits. So thank you.
That's right. Thank you.
Let me remove this for you.
Who's going to do that?
We could all benefit.
You can carry it with you.
I'm going to ask her if I can borrow it. Take it with me.
Thank you, Councilmember Hudson.
I'm going to stand on it.
We do have a lot of fun, don't we? Introduction 128A, sponsored by Councilmember Rafael Salamanca, would require every city park bathroom to have a diaper-changing table by December 2027. It took a dad. Right now, less than half of the approximately 1,400 bathrooms under the jurisdiction of the Parks Department do not have a diaper-changing table, making it difficult for families with young children to fully use city parks. This legislation will make a tangible difference for families with young children who play in our parks. I invite Councilmember Salamanca, one of the dads that get it, to come and share some words with us now on the importance of his bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The way I came up with this bill, when Aiden was one years old, I took him to the playground, and I needed to change his diaper, and I ended up doing it on a park bench on my lap. And so I'm just proud to know that I'm here with my colleagues to pass a bill to change that. Intro 128 is a common sense legislation. Currently, New York City requires diaper-changing stations to be available in all bathrooms in new or recently renovated public buildings where merchandise is sold, and places like theaters, bowling alleys, museums, and shopping malls. Surprisingly, though, the one place I noticed that did not require a diaper-changing stations are New York City parks bathrooms. And despite being a place where families spend a great deal of their time, the lack of changing stations left parents changing their children's diapers on park benches and equipment and on their laps, like I did, or even on the grounds, all of which are unsanitary locations. When I first introduced this bill in October of 2019, only about 31% of parks' bathrooms had sufficient changing stations. Since then, parks has begun closing the gap on this issue and has doubled the amount of changing stations in city bathrooms, which I commend them for. However, legislation is still needed to require a 100% fulfillment rate in a timely manner. That is why I introduced Intro 128, which sets benchmarks on how quickly changing stations are installed in parks' bathrooms. Without Intro 128, parents throughout the city will continue to face changing their children's diapers in unsanitary conditions. I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, for your leadership on this issue and to cheer Krishnan and the Committee on Park Staff for their work on this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's great. Introduction 8A, sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brennan, would require the disclosure of full-ticket prices whenever they are displayed in advertisements for ticketed sports, entertainment, and other types of events. Under this legislation, ads must display the total price that customers have to pay, including taxes and fees. The bill seeks to prevent consumer deception based on the high fees charged by some ticket sellers. It is critical that New Yorkers and visitors who attend ticketed events don't get taken advantage of by companies. I now invite Councilmember Brennan to speak about his important legislation.
Thank you, Speaker. I think what's cool about all these bills you're hearing today is that they're all coming from a place where they're either things that we personally dealt with or concerns that were brought to us by constituents, and I think that's really what it's all about. Someone walks into your office and says there ought to be a law, that's our job as lawmakers. And this bill, 8A, really came from that, and folks who are getting fleeced by ticket companies, basically. And what we're trying to do here is strengthen the state law that exists for point-of-purchase going after advertising. So with this law, you will no longer, companies will no longer be able to say, you know, tickets to Aladdin start at 20 bucks unless you can actually get a ticket all in for 20 bucks. Because what normally happens is it says tickets start at 20 bucks, but you can't find a ticket for 20 bucks. Usually, that $20 ticket turns into a $60 ticket. So enforcing the advertising and the way that these ticket companies promote their shows or concerts or baseball games or whatever, I think will add some transparency and hopefully some fairness. So I appreciate the speaker allowing me to pass this bill, and I think it's going to help a lot of working families who are just trying to have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good stuff. Finally, as we observe Earth Month and the upcoming Earth Day, we will be voting on two pieces of legislation that are crucial to our ongoing fight against climate change. The climate crisis is already here, and we know that urgent action on all levels of government is needed to protect and preserve the world that we call home. The legislation we're passing today is just a few of the many bills that we're focused on in the council. Introduction 606A, sponsored by Councilmember Alexa Aviles, would protect clean air by amending the city's idling laws to restrict idling to one minute in spaces adjacent to or within most parks. I now invite Councilmember Aviles to speak about her legislation.
Thank you, Speaker. And I can't agree with my colleague, Councilmember Brennan, more about how much of the legislation that we bring forward absolutely comes from residents' direct lives and experiences and certainly from ours as a parent changing a child on a bench or in all kinds of strange places. So Intro 606 is an anti-idling expansion from what we currently have. As the speaker mentioned, climate change is here to stay, and this is just one piece of the movement that we need to do, right? It is both raising consciousness about our own behaviors, of not thinking about sitting in cars and idling, and the impact that that has, representing a community that really has significantly high asthma rates because of the polluting infrastructure that surrounds it, namely a BQE and other polluting infrastructure. We must do everything in our power to both change our behaviors, change our laws, and change the way we interact with the earth around us, because there is only one planet, Earth. There are not two, and there are no backups. And so this is just, again, legislation where we already have a rule in place for schools, and applying this rule to parks is just kind of one step in the right direction to cleaner, safer air for our children to learn and play. Finally, we know from city data who is likely to pay as a result of this bill? Big companies, actually. Your average New Yorker is not the culprit behind idling near schools and parks for many minutes at a time. Open data, actually, on idling tells us the five worst idling offenders include big corporations, Amazon, Con Edison, and major logistics companies like FedEx. We all must do better. Thank you so much, and thank you, Speaker.
Thank you very much. And Introduction 239A, sponsored by our Environmental Protection, Resiliency, and Waterfronts Committee Chair, Councilmember James Gennaro, would require the Department of Buildings to conduct targeted annual outreach to educate building owners about the benefits of installing solar and green roof systems. I invite Councilmember Gennaro to share some words about the importance of his bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And before I start about the bill, let's get back to the Wendy thing, okay? My wife is Wendy, and she does have red hair, but a different Wendy. So we're off Wendy's fast foods. No more horsey sauce, if anyone knows what that is. Arby's people will know that. And why am I here? The bill, the bill, yeah. So 239, it's kind of a common sense measure, sort of a follow-up to what I'd done a long time ago with an energy audit bill, Local Law 87, many, many years ago, which requires buildings to do energy audits, and then once people have information that they see how much payback they can get if they do certain things to the house in terms of energy improvements and these kinds of efficiencies, when people see what's in their own economic best interest and they have the information right in front of them, sometimes they will do that, and that's certainly what happened with Local Law 87. But this is about, you know, green roofs and solar panels. There are already our laws on the books here, Local Law 92 and 94, they're kind of like companion bills of 2019. It requires roofs of a certain size if they're going to do a major expansion or if they're going to put a new roof on, has to be green and/or solar. But it's important that, you know, buildings that are not caught, you know, that are not part of the target group for Local Law 92 and, you know, 94, that they should be given the materials where they can see all of the inducements, all the tax credits, and what they can do to, you know, make their, you know, to make their roofs greener, to produce solar power, you know, to lower their energy bills. So it's kind of a common sense measure, and also something we do in my district office, you know, I'm the environmental chair, I'm supposed to do stuff like this, and, you know, eager to do it. And, you know, we give these things, and, you know, we have these events where we tell homeowners and we go to civic associations and that kind of thing and hand out all this information. And so we got the idea, why don't we do this citywide? And so this would call upon, this would mandate that the administration do targeted outreach to, you know, building owners to give them all the information they need on the various inducements that can lead them to a greater future. And so there you have it. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Gennaro. Our very best to your Wendy. This concludes our stated agenda, and with that, we will take on-topic questions first.
Any on-topic questions? Okay, so if there are no on-topic questions, thank you, Councilmembers.
Thank you. We'll see shortly.
I'm transitioning. Yeah. Any on-topic questions? John?
Hi, Council Speaker. I wanted to ask you about three Brownsville boys who were allegedly managed by a retired cop with a gun. This was in late 2021. This was the case where Chief Madry showed up at the station and intervened, and the retired cop was released and his arrest was voided. In the past week, these boys have been publicly asking why there's no support for them from people in power. And as a reminder, the boys correctly identified that the retired cop's gun was silver and black, and he was found with a licensed silver and black gun. One of the boys this week told Hotline Southern Radio, quote, "It feels like we're by ourselves. It feels like nobody believes us." So I just wanted to ask you where the council has been on this issue and where do you stand on the NYPD's voiding of the retired cops?
Thank you for the question. You know, I don't have the full details of the incident itself, but what I've read about and heard is very troubling, and I'm bothered by any young person in our city feeling traumatized or unsafe in their own neighborhood. That should never happen, whether from an experience on their own or whether from a police officer or anyone else. Accountability for us is very, very important, and it's very, very troubling to hear that, that these young folks do not feel supported. They should feel supported and they should be supported. It absolutely undermines public safety when any incident in a community causes distrust. So from this podium, if they're listening to this council speaker, you are supported.
Is there a role that the council can be playing as far as accountability?
Well, as far as accountability itself, you know, we are the legislators for the city, so we continue to take a look at legislation, which is our oversight hand. We continue to take a look at that. As far as other avenues of support, our individual council members wholeheartedly support the youth in their individual districts and will continue to do so through their systems, through their organizations, their CBOs and nonprofits.
Thank you. John?
The NYPD is bringing back robot dogs. I'm wondering if you think this is a good idea? And then also, there's this law, the POST Act, that requires extra oversight of police technology, and I'm wondering if it's your understanding that the PD is following that law, the introduction, reintroduction of these Digi-Dogs?
We are going to definitely take a look at the POST Act to figure that part out, but it is concerning to see the NYPD spending money like this on technology that is seemingly unproven when the administration is making cuts to essential services that are so needed right now in the city.
Thank you. Nolan?
The police department says they're going to fund these new robots out of the forfeiture budget. Is that something the council can stop? And are there other things we'd like to see the forfeiture money used for?
Well, it's certainly something that we can have a larger conversation about. We will definitely take a look at it. This just happened today, so we've still got a ways to go as far as figuring it out, the forfeiture dollars, how that should be spent, the best way that it should be spent, and how the council needs to now take the next step when it comes to this particular item.
Do you think the mayor's being responsible, okaying these sorts of expenditures in the midst of a budget crisis? I see your deputy manager shaking her head.
I'm not going to allow her to answer that question. So what I will say, though, Nolan, is that, you know, we are very focused when it comes to this budget and expenditures through this budget. We are very intentional about the things that we've set forth in this budget. We are intentional about our priorities that we've set forth in this budget. Our oversight hearings have proven largely a lot of the points that the council is intent on happening in this budget. That's what we're going to stand on, that's what we're going to continue to fight for. Whether or not the mayor is making reasonable decisions, I will leave that to someone else to decide, for right now, the council is focused on passing this budget and passing it for all New Yorkers.
Thank you. Bob?
There was a considerable crowd of very diverse retirees outside, several hundred, concerned about shift to pay the Medicare advantage. Last year, The New York Times reported that Edna was under investigation by the Department of Justice, something the company also disclosed in its SEC filings. Are you concerned that the city of Newark has turned over the providing of health care coverage for its retirees to a company that's a subject of a federal crime?
Well, as far as the carrier is concerned, again, I am going to leave that to those who have negotiated in behalf of the contract, those who have bargained and are continuing to bargain in, you know, in the behalf of all of the retirees. The retirees, as you know, we've had this conversation before. As far as the council is concerned, they asked us very adamantly in droves not to touch the administrative code to preserve their legal standing in court, which we have not done. We are definitely committed to continuing to hear both sides, but as far as inter-
but as far as intervening with, with the plan, with the carrier, that's something that the council is not going to do.
Would that be something under the charter? Isn't it the comptroller has an opportunity to review? Isn't that the next step of something of an acquisition of that size?
Well, I would leave that up to the comptroller himself, and his involvement in this is going to be totally, you know, under his purview, whatever the next step is. If that is for the comptroller to handle, then I'm sure that he is going to do just that.
Can you anticipate any basis upon which you might, the council might want to step forward and assert itself? Who would you have to see in terms of, would you have to see physical harm, some people dying, something that was out of the ordinary? What, what proofs do they need tonight to get your engagement?
Well, once again, our engagement for now, and your question is gonna remain in the distance for now. Our engagement is as far as the retirees asked us to go in oversight, and that is where we are right now. We want to give them the respect of all litigation that they asked for and anything that may transpire as a result of that litigation. Thank you.
Hi, Councilmember. I want to know if you plan on signing up for the resolution we introduced tonight to call the state legislator to vote for a pass Sammy's law in the budget?
Thank you for that question. You know, I know that many of my colleagues have expressed support of Sammy's law, and I do respect their advocacy for it. Traffic violence and addressing it should absolutely be a priority for us. And my advocacy around the state budget has focused on protecting New York City's budget from additional costs being shifted in other places. We are going to let the state do what the state does with response, in response to Sammy's law. We have prioritized in our budget priorities, our focus for right now, which has to do with housing, which has to do with closing Rikers and other things. Thank you.
Any word on state budget negotiations? Have you had your ear up in Albany about housing or whatever else?
I know what you know. I know what you know, and that is, that is, it, it looks like it's a wait-and-see kind of thing. I know that what we have done as a council is make our wants and wishes known to our state partners more than once, more than once in person and more than once by way of letters and other things as well. So right now, we are hoping, you know, given, you know, the second, you know, extension, we are hoping that they can get it together for the sake of everybody involved, us included. We do have to start stated.
How do you even, like, get out a budget without knowing what all that is? Because you don't know what the per pupil stuff, you know, funding rates are. That's like $2 billion in the city budget. You don't know what any stuff with a $0.5 billion, $0.8 billion, you know?
Yep.
Like, the, the list of unknowns is...
You're absolutely right, Nolan. And in that, we are going to have to take everything that we have gleaned from our oversight hearings, all of the discussions and meetings that we have had with our state partners, the conversations that we continue to have with our state partners, and we're gonna have to put all of those things together and come up with the best solution for our city as a council.
At, at what point does the state budget impact the problem of the city?
Well, I wouldn't call it, I, I don't want to consider anything a problem right now because we're not there. We want to continue to give our state partners all of the leeway that they need to get it right. Thank you.
Thank you.